Good evening. Welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council meeting. Happy to have all of you here. I hope it doesn't pour down rain at the same time because all this rain's about to run me crazy. Thank you for joining us. If you have a cellphone on you, please silence your cellphone so that we can give you our attention and you our, yours. Do we have anyone? We'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Moody's going to do our prayer this evening. If you'd like to join us, you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear God, thank you for allowing us to meet here today to do the town's business, just be with us tonight as we make decisions that are important and just bring us here again. In your name I pray. Amen.
Council members, you have been provided a copy of the minutes from our January 27th, 2020 meeting. Do you have any, do I have first a motion?
I have a motion for approval.
Okay, and?
A second.
Have a second. Anyone have any questions, changes, or additions to those minutes? Hearing none. All those by show of hand that are in favor of the motion to approve say aye. Aye. And all those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Public comment pursuant to Section 246 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Davy, do we have a public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. Al, it's been awhile.
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up. You know the routine.
Name is Al Rogat, 1006 Crest Haven Lane in Fort Mill. And it's been a couple of months since I was here, so?
Yes, it has.
I would like to congratulate the winners of the last election.
Thank you.
And thank all the people who ran whether they won or lost because it's important that people run. I am here to make the council aware, in case you're not aware, of the current conditions of the Fort Mill YMCA complex. The boilers went out in November 2018 through all kinds of, I don't even know what to call it. It was 15 months until the pool was back to a normal steady temperature. We had no heat in the weight room for the month of December for five weeks. We have no heat in the pool except for some rigged outdoor furnace blowing hot air through two 12-inch tubes. The whirlpool was out for the last four weeks. It finally came back last week. Now we have no domestic hot water to take showers. And that's, this is the second week we have no domestic hot water.
Davy, do you have an update? Because I have, Al, just for you, I have had a comment from a person that lives in my neighborhood about the same thing. And I've gotten some information back and forth, but I'd like for Davy to address it and then I'm going to make a comment to it. Please.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, county staff was made aware from the YMCA staff that there were some issues with the lack of hot water for the shower rooms for both the men and women there at the YMCA in the pool area. So we contacted a, our contractor who actually installed the boiler to have them come and check, find out what was going on with it. The boiler itself working perfectly fine, it's brand-new boilers, operating as it should. What they did find was a bad tank temperature sensor that when it releases, it allows the hot water to go out toward the, or be sent to the shower facilities. And so they have sensed that, that part was not in stock, so they've ordered it and the expected delivery date is tomorrow. So we anticipate that being repaired fairly quickly.
I am of the opinion that companies should stand on their work just as we have to before the people that are our residents, our taxpayers, and our customers. They can have tomorrow to fix it, but if we don't have hot water like this back and forth, let's find another company. Let's find another company that can stand behind the work so that the people that pay the fees to belong as members have what they're paying for. So I want to turn the screws down on the people that are supposed to be working with us to make that happen. Council members? Al?
In their defense, from my understanding, there's a new contractor who's been working with the issue for the last, I'd say, four to eight weeks. They weren't here for the last year and I think they pretty much fixed what was all wrong until the boiler, until we lost our hot water. So, I mean, they've been doing a better job than was done for a year until this. You've lost, you've lost 20 to 30 percent of the members or more.
Well, I think some of them have left for different reasons.
Well, two price raises.
Right.
And no pool and a lot of different things, no heat. You name it, there's enough reasons, but I think they've lost.
But I do think it's really important because there's so much going on to bring the complex up to a better standard mechanically, that we've spent more money than we thought we were going to have to, to make repairs to a great number of things. Everything from sidewalk replacement to roof repairs to, Davy, you can?
The boilers.
HVAC. We really, when we were given the complex, we knew there would be maintenance. I'm not sure that we were totally acclimated to how much we were going to have to do to get it in good operating order. So, you know, we are working on it.
Oh, I know.
I know it's not, it's certainly not happening at a pace that makes everybody happy, but we are working on it diligently and we want it to be in good operating order.
I think if anybody asked the members before the turnover a year and a half ago, we could have told you about these problems because they existed before you got it.
Is that it for tonight?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Al. We have no further.
This is the second, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is the second or third time we've had these complaints. Is the why and good, do we have good communications with them?
That, I think that's more of the issue. We've got to get a better understanding from the team at the YMCA as to how are they hearing these complaints and when they hear them, are they addressing them or reaching out to us? We, on our end, whenever we're made aware of something, we act on it immediately. We put, send it through our procurement process. Mr. Rogat, speaking of the heat at the fitness center, as soon as we were made aware of it, we contracted with the company to come out. They tested it, the unit was shot, so we ordered a brand-new unit. It took a few weeks turnaround to get, to receive that unit, but it was installed immediately. The heating for the pool, we, that heating unit was working just fine until in the last couple of months, it completely went out. And the age on that unit, it was, for our understanding, it was the original unit with the building and so it's well past its life cycle. So it was a 300,000 BTU unit, so it was a large enormous size. So we've ordered that and it was a two-month turnaround just to build it.
So you put a new boiler on an old regulator and it was just a matter of, yeah, and that's not like we can go to Lowe's and pick up one of those boilers, those things are built to size.
Yes, and this was a specialized boiler. You had to get one that, that fit this, the area that we were in. So it was a specialized boiler.
And then however big, however long you make it, they just bring the coil in and weld the metal in.
But I do think we've done a, more than a plausible job at addressing and moving forward with the things we know we need to address at the complex. It continues to provide great programs and great service. We are in a transition period. There's a new director and the director that left had been there for years. She knew every nook and cranny of the complex, so, you know, she kind of could tell when it was going to happen. We have a new director. We need to let her get her feet wet. Not literally, but.
It's a little cold.
Yeah, right. Be cold water. But I'm proud of the progress we're making and the service that it provides to the community. But Al, I do appreciate the updates when things are not as they should be. So, thank you, Davy. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Brown. And we will work on communications to ensure that we're all on the same page. All right. No further, folks have signed in, so we will move directly into our presentations. Presentation number one, Mickey Rensler to receive employee of the quarter award, Davy Brent. I love these. These are good.
Mayor, I'm going to invite Mickey up to the podium with me. And again, I want to do this in front of the podium where my voice is heard on the mic rather than up in front of you, but these are the fun time or enjoyment time for myself because I get to brag on our staff members. And in recent employee of the quarter presentations, I failed to give a little more detailed information on what this program actually is. For the employee of the quarter, each quarter our employees are given the opportunity to nominate a teammate. Each nomination comes with a brief explanation as to why the employee qualifies. Nominations are then studied and ranked individually by a committee made up of staff members. In order to qualify or be nominated, employees are nominated for going above and beyond their normal duties, exceptional work, and for making significant contribution to the Town of Fort Mill. The significant contribution is defined as providing excellent service to town citizens and coworkers, developing and implementing a new program which will benefit all, benefit the overall organization and any other contribution which the nominator believes is noteworthy. Employees may be nominated for providing exemplary service in their daily job performance and demonstrating a willingness to work above and beyond the call of duty. I'm happy to say that we are very blessed to have many qualified candidates on our staff. But for this quarter, again, we would like to recognize Mickey Rensler, who is our business office manager for the town. I'm going to read her nomination. Says, "I would like to nominate Mickey Rensler for her employee of the quarter. Mickey is a terrific person and dedicated employee. Her personality and professionalism resonate with everyone she works with. Her desire to go the extra mile for our residents and our customers is noticeable. We're fortunate to have her in our organization." Again, she's our business office manager. She's been with us a little over a year. Is that correct? And in that timeframe, she's had her hands full. She's been tasked with, she's been instrumental in the conversion from our previous billing system into our new billing system. So she's working in two systems right now, trying to learn the new one and the old one at the same time and then trying to make them work together. She's been tasked with helping troubleshoot billing issues during implementation of our mine net meter system. So she's learning a brand-new system with that. Through all of that, she goes above and beyond in ensuring that our utilities billing stays on track. So that's very time-consuming in itself. She does all of this with a smile on her face and, and I can certainly tell you that her actions shine a positive light on the Town of Fort Mill. And for that, we want to present Mickey with our employee of the quarter plaque. And if we can, let's come up here so we can take a photo.
All right, Mickey. (applause).
If we record it, people will hear it. Sure. Sing better than I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey, thank you so much for what you do for the community, for the employee base. It's a wonderful thing to be recognized for what you do, but to be recognized by your peers is awfully special.
I'm honored and thank y'all very much.
We're very happy to have you. Thank you so much. Presentation number two, introduction of Jocana Hester as our new events coordinator for the Town of Fort Mill. Come on up, Jocana.
I'm going to stay up here, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Each and every one of you are aware of Jocana and the service that she has provided at the Town of Fort Mill in her tenure with the town. Jocana was formerly, was formerly employed with the town since April of 2017. She previously served as our administrative secretary and those duties included assisting the human resources manager and also the procurement manager in their department duties. She excelled in her role due to her professional work ethic and kind demeanor. During her career with the town, she has gone above and beyond and was willing to provide her assistance and skills, her skill set to most of our town events. Most recently, Jocana's provided her assistance in coordinating our tree lighting event, our Christmas parade, and our Martin Luther King Jr. Call to Service Week event. They were all well-organized and well-attended and they were just huge successes. She along with our public works manager, Chris Sardelli, they worked really close together in planning and promoting of these events. And again, they were just, we couldn't be happier with the way they were presented and the way they were turned out. You know, once, just recently, in the last few weeks, we went through our standard procedures and policies with the town and put out the request or opportunity for anyone to apply for this role internally. We do that first and foremost. During that process, Jocana, she threw a name in the hat. We went through the interview process and her, everything she's done for the town and how she's served just, just overwhelmed me. And so she was a, just a natural choice for this role. She has worked well with our Fort Mill merchants, with our vendors for all of our events, and especially our teammates on staff. So I can't say, you know, enough how fortunate we are as a town to have her continue her career as our events coordinator. So I would, I am formally introducing her as our events coordinator for the town and that's, she will be handling all the duties from now on.
Let's welcome Jocana to our table.
And I just want to say, I'm very honored and I'm very excited to be in this position. Thank you.
Well, Jocana, you're one of the employees everybody hopes for. You're the one that we can say, no matter what the task, Jocana, can you help? And you never say no. Always exceed our expectations, so thank you. All right. Old business items. There are no old business items. That's an easy one. New business item number one, public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill. Article two, requirements by district, section nine, highway commercial district, so as to add religious institutions as an allowed use in the highway commercial district. We will open the public hearing first. Anyone have any requests or comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now we'll move into a motion for the first reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve new business item number one.
A second. I have a motion and a second. Do you have any questions, council, that you might like to ask about this particular item?
It seemed pretty obvious, but Penelope, I mean, isn't it as basic as we're allowing for religious institutions?
Good evening, council. Yes, it is. It is. It's just we realize we were not, was not an allowable use in the highway commercial and so we're adding it as a permitted use.
Okay, perfect.
Is that going to then hinder some businesses to not be able to, if a religious institute goes in the one section of a development and then say a bar or something like that wants to go in, but they're not allowed because of the proximity of the church?
Based on the highway commercial, I mean, this would be another allowable use. Now, others, other regulations from the state, that's on a separate issue, but from the local issue for permissible uses, you know, restaurants allowed in a highway commercial and, and a religious institution is as well.
I know what you're asking. You know, there are distances that are requirements.
Right, and that's our.
I believe, I believe the state Department of Revenue has regulations for liquor sales in proximity to uses like this, but not alcohol sales generally. Don't quote me on that, but I believe that was the latest that I've seen.
We certainly can look into that. This is first reading. So Penelope, if you would take an action item to track down if there is any conflict that would be immediately.
Right.
Obvious that we need to address.
So I was looking at our highway commercial, that's, we can get some nice commercial activity going on in there and if we're going to, and by all means, I'd love to have them in there also, but if that's going to hamstring any commercial growth that we can get in there, then we need to make sure we get all those bases covered before we.
Let me do some research on that separation distance and see.
That's a good question. That's why we go through more than one reading. So would you like to amend? No?
No.
Help me.
Just vote to approve it. That's what we're going to do and then you can always come back.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion on the table to approve the first reading. Do you have any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye with a show of hand. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Might as well stay up there, Penelope. New business item number two, public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill. Article two, requirements by district, section 29, institutional district, to establish requirements for religious institutions to provide for a public hearing and to provide other matters relating thereto. We will open the public hearing now. Anyone? No one? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number two.
A second. A motion and a second. Penelope, would you like to help us out with this one?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, back in July of 2019, we created the institutional district for the schools. This text amendment is adding the religious institution and we are adding some conditions for the permitted use to be able to have a religious institution in the actual institutional zoning district. We have four conditions. Minimum lot areas shall be at least two acres. Minimum lot width shall be 200 feet. At least one property line meeting the minimum with requirement shall but and have direct access to an arterial or collector street. And also, to the extent where there's practical, to have some shared parking arrangements with the type of use for that religious institution. It went through the planning commission. They did recommend approval four to zero. Just to keep y'all in mind, you know, this is a text amendment. I am working on another text amendment that's going through the planning commission to add hospitals because hospitals will, would fall into the institutional district. And just as a side note, I had some, I've noticed some format issues, so that will be corrected for the second reading where, as you see in this text amendment, it, where schools begin, instead of being one, it's going to be a, religious institution's going to be B, and then the following month, same thing with hospitals, it'd be a subcategory of a C.
Wonderful. Wonderful. For those of you that are wondering what all this is about, it's an opportunity every time we see a change or something in the future that we need to adjust the living documents that are our ordinances to ensure that they continue to do the work that they're intended to do. So it's a rulebook change based on a change that's necessitated that we look at the wording and we do what is right. So Penelope is our expert in making sure that we reword it in a way that we all understand it and can apply it to the best of protecting the future. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Good.
And just for, you know, if anybody does come to inside the Town of Fort Mill and would like to build a new church, we're going to recommend them to rezone the property to this institutional zoning district.
Wonderful.
Quick question, just what, what would take precedence in a Christian school? The school piece of it or the religious piece of it?
That's a good question.
Thank you. I have a few.
That's a good one.
I would, I would believe the religious institution.
Okay.
But that is something that we've discussed in the past.
I wouldn't.
They're business, aren't they?
But they're part of a, an actual church?
But they're taxable. Yeah, if it's part of a, I thought you meant like a Christian day school somewhere.
Well, like Westminster.
Okay. That would, that would, that would have, we would have to do a text amendment if this council chose to put it into the institutional district.
So, just kind of for clarification, just because.
That's a good, very good question.
But there's, there's talk of, you know, various schools coming here and not just the school districts.
And there has been discussion at the planning commission when we took the actual K through 12 discussion for the institutional district. They also had discussed possibly putting something about private schools or other school systems that are not K through 12, you know, your, your public, something that's private.
So where would the Goddard School be at?
It's a business.
That's like a daycare.
Yeah, it's more of a business than.
Yeah, I think toxic camp should give us the clue.
Right, but you could have nonprofit, or I'm trying to think of the term you could use that would kind of be an all encompass on there, for-profit, nonprofit, learning institution.
And there's been some research on institutional districts and whatever the jurisdiction would like to add or delete. I mean, I've seen where they did add daycares. There's also utility substations that are actually in the institutional district as well. So it just depends on what council would like for staff to research to, to continue adding or.
Typically, it's for the good of the whole.
Yes.
It's not an isolated use, but a needed use for the good of the whole.
And we wanted to identify the institution district just because some of the properties that were floating around here were so convoluted. They were, some of them were high-density residential.
Residential.
Still underneath the school banner and we didn't want that to flip and suddenly now we have a whole pile of houses going in where we weren't expecting, that we're expecting another.
Right.
Football field.
Right. I appreciate the effort because it's, it's ridiculous. It's like editing a dictionary.
It is.
You know, it's truly ongoing, so I thank you so much. Any further questions, council? Yes, ma'am.
How would you treat a small startup church, like, say they're going to need it to Peach Stand?
You had to choose Peach Stand.
You're not going to get tax exempt status.
Well, right now, you know, right now, you know, with the current zoning, you know, it's pretty much allowed in residential and local commercial and then with the, the text amendment that we did, so even if it's residential, local commercial, or highway commercial, it's allowed, or a church. This is just the institutional district. Any new churches, it would fall under that if it was zoned the property. So this is really one step of kind of categorizing everything under institutional. But today, if a church wants to go into a shopping center and it's zoned local commercial, it can. It's a permitted use.
Any further questions? Thank you, Penelope. We have a motion to approve this particular item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New business item number three, an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property located at 215 Main Street pursuant to the terms and conditions contained in a contract of purchase and sale dated January the 14th, 2020. Davy is our, our expert on this item. I need a motion.
I make a motion to accept new business item number three.
I'll suck it in.
I have a motion and a second. Davy, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Yes, ma'am. Just a little bit of information. Just recently, I was authorized to negotiate and enter into a contract to sell the property at 215 Main Street, also known as the Sprat Building. State law requires that real property be sold by way of an ordinance of town council. That's what we're bringing before you tonight. We're doing that because the prospective buyer is expecting to invest a sizable amount of money into doing their due diligence on the property itself, determine if it's going to meet their need. And because of that, they're asking that we move forward with this ordinance to, before they invest any funds in their due diligence process.
To add to that, you know, it may seem surprising to some because it is a building that's been here all my life. We are very blessed to have a vibrancy downtown that has continued for quite some time and we haven't seen for years. So we're very excited about downtown being a destination again. We also recognize that the facility didn't offer the options that we were looking for moving forward as a growing community and blessedly so. We have some capital projects that we have begun to size up what we might do with them to give even greater benefit to our constituents in our community. So we saw an opportunity to sell the building and take those funds to add to furthering a project at our community center that will give us additional options for our community, additional parking. additional parking, larger meeting spaces, things that our community truly needs. And it also adds vitality to the existing energy that has come to Main Street. So we've been thinking along these lines, and I applaud our council for looking forward. Counsel, any questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table and a second to approve this ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye with a show of hand. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. We have no information discussions and no executive sessions items for tonight. So with that, Mr. Huntley, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Yes, across the back of the room, we have some Boy Scouts. I'd like to point that out.
We do have Boy Scouts. Hi. Hi. How about, since we're kind of early this evening, let's start in the corner and stand up and say your name, please.
Hi, I'm Sandra Patrick. I'm actually the Dumb Leader. We are from PAC 219. These gentlemen are currently working on their Arrow of Light, which is the highest rank within the Cub Scouts.
Amazing.
So within the next couple of months, they will be transitioning into Boy Scouts and crossing over.
That's wonderful. Can you stand up and say your name?
I'm Seth. I'm Seth Michael Patrick and, and my, and she's actually my mom.
Oh, my. That's wonderful. Thank you for joining us tonight. And you are?
Caleb.
Caleb? Nice to have you, Caleb. Are you part of the scouting?
I'm his mom's daughter.
His mom? That's a bigger role than we all think. That's right.
My name is Lyndon Wiger.
Hi. Nice to have you both. And you are?
I'm Julia Frank.
Hi. Nice to have you.
I'm Ryan Patrick.
And Ryan Patrick.
I'm Michael Russo.
Hi, Michael. Thank you so much for taking time out of your evening to come sit and watch. Show of hands back there on the back row. Anybody want to grow up and do this? Big one up top. Baseball player?
I'm sorry, could you give us your PAC number again?
It's PAC 219.
219.
PAC 219. Well, thank you so much for coming, and I hope you change your mind in the future because we can always use some good ones. So thank you for coming tonight. Jamie?
I spent some good time down in Columbia representing the town at the M.C., or M.A.S.C. Picked up some good stuff for all of us to learn about. A lot of people are watching our community, seeing everything that we're doing and watching how we grow. Some are envious, some are not so envious. Some of them want to join us, and I have to keep a handout saying, no, we're good. There's a lot of things that are happening in the next upcoming months. Just keep your eyes on the horizon. We're moving at light speed here in town of Fort Mill. It's awesome time to be here.
Great. Lisa?
Like Jamie, I was down in Columbia with a group. And like he said, it's, there's a gentleman sitting behind me during the class that's from Chester area, and they're fighting for growth. They're fighting for people to come down there. You know, there's businesses, a friend of mine's losing her job because one of the businesses is closing down there. And then you can, guy from York's sitting in front of me, and we're like, you know, can we slow it down? So yes, we're very blessed to have the growth we have. We'd like to be able to control it more than what we're able to do and continue looking at ways to control it. So it's very educational, and it's an honor to serve this town, to be around that group of people. Thank you, PAC 219. I got to meet Caleb through basketball this season. So he participated in our Parks and Rec program. So it's good to see those friendships grow out of just the sports into the other aspects of our life. So thank you, Caleb, and appreciate serving on this council again.
All righty. Trudy?
I too was in Columbia with Jamie and with Lisa. And it is amazing when you go and talk with other people throughout the state of South Carolina, just how fortunate we are here in Fort Mill. And as Lisa alluded to, at one time, for those of you who do not know, Fort Mill was a very small, sleepy town. And we really had no growth. But then there were only a handful of people that lived here, so we were doing okay. But the growth has come, and there are a lot of our neighbors that would really relish in growth. I know I have some good friends that live in the Carshaw area down in there, and they would love to have some of the growth that we have.
Thank you, Trudy. Chris?
I remember in 2001, when I pulled into town, in my mind, I had Fort Mill as this big city between Rock Hill and Charlotte. I'd never been here before. And I pulled in, and I said, is this it? And I was like, well, I'm going to go check out the downtown. I bet there's a lot going on down there. And I rode down, and I thought, well, we got a pizza place and a barber shop. And that was my two main memories of it. And who would have thought almost 20 years later, it would be what we have here now? I mean, like you guys said, a lot of people would love to have the downtown we have. I mean, we're very, very blessed. It's a good, good place to be, a good place to raise a family. That's it, Ron.
Well, I remember when I used to shop downtown as a kid. Grocery store, food stores.
There was a grocery store?
Pyramid grocery.
Several.
Yeah, yeah. Men's shop. DC stores. Mel's Brown. I mean, it was all downtown at one time, but of course, that was 100 years ago. I'd like to say again that I am very humbled and thank my constituents for trusting me and to voting me into mayor pro temp.
All righty. I would like to commend our, and I do this as often as I can, but it's not often enough to say thanks for the town staff that on the days that there are tornadoes nearby or fires at homes or floodwaters everywhere, you know, we have staff members that don't go home and make sure their furniture's tied down or their car's in the garage or their plants are covered. They go and do the work for us. They make sure our roads are passable and safe. They respond to our every call. Doesn't matter what it is. They come when we need them, and they do the work to protect us in advance. So when the weather's getting really bad and I'm thinking, gee, I'd like to go home. I bet my dog's gone crazy. You know, I really have to stop and think about stormwater people, the public works people, the police, the fire, our staff. They don't leave it until it's done. They don't leave it until it's done. And then they come back and do their real work the next day. So thanks to each of you, and I do mean it every time, but it's still not enough. It's just not enough. You go unrecognized in a lot of situations when we're looking out for ourselves. And I appreciate the fact that you're looking out for us, too. So thank you very much. We live in a special place. And it was special when I was growing up. It was special when I didn't even think much about it being here, and it's even more special now when I realize the value that we have in our community. So thank you all for being here. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I made that motion.
I'll second. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you and have a good evening.